We have to adopt the agenda. We have some amendments to the agenda. First is a late item number 12A, which is related to the downtown flood protection, critical bank erosion, the things we talked about in committee of the whole this morning. So this is, or actually it was in our financial planning session. So that will be at the end of the agenda. Is that the end of the call on there to change?
Yes.
Okay, so adoption of the agenda with the addition of this late item. Can I have a motion, Councilor Corlick? All those in favor? Minutes, we have the January 28th special go-in camera minutes. Those are always exciting. The motion to adopt, nothing in there. Counselor Stugl, get your hand up there. Counselor Stugl, seconded. You do need seconders, it's regular meeting. Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? Kibber. That should have been the easiest one, Kibber. Okay, and the next is the January 28th regular meeting minutes. Motion to adopt, Councilor Corlick, seconded. Counselor Stugl, you know that. All those in favor? And no petitions, delegations. We're down to the written reports of council. And I would invite councillors that have presented written reports and were wishing to make verbal statements to, please go ahead.
Thank you, Yourship. My report had a proposed resolution that we discussed at length at the Committee of the Whole. And we are going to be referring the resolution to the next regular meeting of council on the 35th of February. And during that time, council is going to work together to put that resolution in a format that we are all comfortable taking forward to the AKBLG and hopefully onward to the UBCM. So that's all I have to say on my report.
Thank you, Counselor. So yeah, we're going to shape that up and pass it at the beginning of the meeting. 31st of March?
No.
31st of March, okay. So that's got to go on into 28th. All right, Counselor Moslin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too presented a written report to council on two issues, which I'll speak very briefly on. The first one is that February 19th is a big day, is the hopeful date when the rip rap armoring of South Ruckle will begin. It's not far away. We've also been in touch and contact with Paula Evans, who's developing emergency response plan with the regional district. And flood impacted neighborhoods can expect to have public meetings on their participation in for the spring freshup and for plans that will go on to future freshups. The other issue that's taken up a lot of our time this evening, indeed with the last public hearing, centers around housing. This is another issue that seems to be critical to us. Right now, we have two petitions and some concerned neighbors for three different housing projects that are going on. One of the housing projects, of course, is the Second Street project. And this was basically introduced to council and the previous council with little or no lead-up time or consultation. This has saddled this council with a difficult, some difficult choices and in many ways sidelined us from having an impact or making decisions that we were elected to do. We were elected to solve the housing problem with partners, not to endure somebody else's solutions. Anyhow, Mayor, I have proposed a motion for the AKBLG, which would be pushed back at a political level for B.C. Housing. It was discussed at the Committee of the Whole. I have taken in a few suggestions and I will rewrite the motion for the next regular meeting of council in the hopes that council will support it and that will move it along to the AKBLG. Anyhow, that's my report for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Further comments from council? Counselor Crogg?
With Counselor Moslin, wish to leave the...
Uh, no, we're still crafting. Yeah, never mind. We are working on, but you could give them a flavor, but if you wish to.
Well, it is on the screen. Keeping aware as a short, the intent of this is to have a very simple motion. And so that put it forward to AKBLG without a lot of bells and whistles and let them add on to it if they wish. The same, hopefully take it small to UBCM, same idea. But I guess it's, being resolved that B.C. Housing seek government's approval before supportive housing initiatives are tendered for construction. Well, I had an input from council earlier this morning. And I said, well, just revert it before supportive housing initiatives, before land is purchased before for a supportive housing initiative. Somewhere along the line, if B.C. Housing is going to spend significant funding of provincial government funding, they should do it in a responsible way. And a responsible way in my mind is to make sure that that money is going to be well-spent in a supportive community. Spending money, large money, with little consultation or with lack of wholehearted support is not a good way in my mind to spend provincial resources. Anyhow, that's a thinking. Did that help, Counselor?
Clearly, what council is doing with this is to strengthen and support Counselor Moslin's motion and Counselor Thompson's motion. Both of them are such important issues for the whole of the interior and for small towns that what we're working on is to try and give it as much punch as possible going to AKBLG, where we know we will get lots of support. But to move that on to UBCM, where there will really be some attention to it by B.C. Housing, that there are ways of doing it without this approach, which is basically no consultation until it's further and further along in the process. And what you hear in Counselor Moslin's motions are that that process can start earlier, they should be ready to do that. It leaves us with a community that's angry, feeling disenfranchised, and it just makes the whole job of housing more difficult. So I hope they'll listen to that, that communities really want to have more say and they've got to be ready to stand up and take their lumps in some of these small communities if they're going in. They haven't here, they've just gone ahead. Anyway, council reports, motion to accept. Counselor Zelinski, Counselor Crogg, all those in favor? Regional district, I'm going to use my time. There's a lot of stuff going on at regional district and I hope that people will take the time to understand some of the difficulties the regional district is experiencing keeping their costs under control. Counselor Moslin is on Recreation Commission, that's a big one where we're certainly seeing the pressures of operating that shared resource here in the community as one that's, they're having more and more difficulty with in terms of their asset management and their control over costs. What I'd like to talk about today is transportation. At the regional transportation discussions, the Boundary Economic Development Committee, all these anachronisms getting into, the Boundary Economic Development Committee, it was pointed out to Grand Forks that in fact, we receive the majority of the service from the transit service. They're based in town here at Interior Health. They do much of their work around town on a call basis. They also run the routes back and forth to the west. And what we're being faced with here is that that group is basically pointing at Grand Forks and asking us to take a leadership role here. It looks like Interior Health is going to hang on to this contract for a short period of time. But I think since all of us have mentioned how important transport is in our community, that this is a chance for us to step forward and to recognize that the boundary table is right. They are paying for services that we are getting the most out of. And so I would like to see us put that on our agenda in future and look at it in terms of how we might do better there. And I honestly don't have answers for that right now, but I think we need to highlight it at the regional table. Comments?
This is the transit?
This is the transit service, yes.
So I guess what we would need in order to make a decision are some cross-digital analysis.
You're going to see the budget.
Know what it would be to operate that kind of service?
And our financial officer will probably be attending, I think, as soon as these budgets are further refined, I think. Juliette, you're going to be seeing that?
Um, well, yeah, I usually see the final paper copy, hot copies of it.
So they're getting down to those final budgets, so that would give us more of a financial look at it. And motion to accept the regional district report. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Crogg, all those in favor? Next item is the Regional District Economic Development Service. So there's two things going on here with the next two bylaws. One is that in number one, the first one, A, we're looking at setting up the service agreement between Area D and the city and also setting up Area E. Am I getting faces on that? Have I got that wrong?
We're just voting on it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So the first one, the 1698 bylaw from the REKB is to set up the Area D and the City of Grand Forks and its own Economic Development Service. And then a little bit later, we have bylaw 1699 that deals with bringing Area C back into the regional boundary-wide Economic Development Service.
I was just going to say that, but Area, number A is also to recognize Area E and the separate economic development.
Yeah, but it doesn't pertain to our, to our reports here for the City of Grand Forks to...
So we're not voting on that?
No, we don't have to do that. It's just number two and number three is what we're dealing with.
Okay, let's deal with number one then. Can I have that motion for bylaw number 1698? Counselor Moslin? Seconded, Counselor Thompson, questions, comments? This is one we've talked about for a couple of months now. We're rolling and the regional district can work with the city to carry on various kinds of economic development activities, so it's a very positive news.
I'd just like to speak in favor, briefly in favor, Mayor. I think it's long overdue.
Yes.
That we actually, this, we are a natural entity, Area D and Area and Grand Forks. We're the hole in the doughnut, so to speak. And it's only by really putting our heads together that the community that we serve together is going to move forward of sound economic development. So I speak in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Any further comment, question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the second one then is, again, as Daniel mentioned, bringing Area C back into the regional table, back to the regional table. And I have that motion for 1699. Counselor Corlick, Counselor Crogg? So questions on this? She, she, don't talk personally here. Area C left the service about six years ago and Area C already runs their own separate economic development entity as a service. But now Area C would like back to the table at the regional level.
Why?
Well, again, to strengthen our position as a region, so that when we're speaking from the regional table, we're covering everything from Beverdale to Christina Lake. So it would again, put us back together as an entity, as a regional table.
I kind of question it, Mayor. We're finally going to focus on our needs. Area C is focused on their needs.
Yeah.
And done very successfully via.
Right.
As far as I could see, they've been able to use that, their, that money to benefit their, specifically their community. We have a chance here to do that, to use those funds to benefit us specifically. I've come a hard time now seeing why they want it back in. And has not Area, has not the Area Director, she's been a voice without vote. Isn't, hasn't that been the situation up to now?
Well, for the past six years, she hasn't sat at that regional table.
She has sat at it, but she just hasn't...
She left six years ago. She doesn't get to vote if she's not at the table.
Okay, sorry, Mayor, but my observations was that she's still at the table.
Well, that's because of the personality of the person representing Area C. She's a strong personality. She votes on lots of things, but not at the Boundary Economic Development Table up till now, when we re-initiate her in the service. Counselor Thompson?
By bringing Area C back into that service, agreeing to it as a council here, she will be contributing for the portion of what goes on at that table in her area from her funds. She won't be using Area D funds or the City of Grand Forks funds or anybody else's funds, only hers. So to bring her back and give her a seat at that table isn't really, I don't find it as, really as an issue. It's just as the mayor says, it gives stronger voice. When you're lobbying senior levels of government, I think for economic development purposes, and correct me if I'm reading that wrong.
No, I think you're right. The regional things, you have to remind yourselves. TODA, regional advertising, we have the Trails Master Plan. These regional things do come up where we want to share something for the whole region. So we need that table, but if you've noticed in the budget, it's been reduced considerably because it leaves us with the opportunities for our own activities with Area D. So the table itself, the spending of the Economic Development Commission has been reduced as much as we can at this point from in our budget discussions. Does that make you more comfortable?
No. Sorry, Mayor. I have seen firsthand what that has done, especially to trails. The division was actually more promoted than erased. I am apprehensive that that's when we finally get an opportunity to focus and unify, there's somebody sitting at the table who doesn't want that focus or that unity. But be that as it may, Mayor, I will certainly accept council's judgment on this and put my own personal feelings aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? So this is, this is basically allowing Area C to join back into the table. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Moslin? Thank you. All right, so we're looking for number C, early budget approval for information technology. Can I ask for that to be presented?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So at the capital budget workshops, we've discussed two items. One of them was for, from the IT department, one of them was for security systems and the other one was for printers and other equipment, which includes about 10 computers. The year is short when it's ticking away, waiting for budgets to be approved. And then sometimes we have emergencies throughout the summer. So to get these projects rolling, it would be fantastic if I could get some sort of commitment from council that I can start purchasing stuff, putting out RFQs, whatever I need to do to get things rolling. The security systems, for example, we have the, our contractor, local contractor is retiring here that knows our whole systems. So I'm trying to move this ahead while he's still around, so he can assist with the changeovers if necessary and at the same time replace 20 to 30-year-old equipment. Is that good enough? Any other questions?
Counselor Zelinski?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a tabling motion on A C and A D until our first meeting in March. And that way, council has a time to actually look at the budget and look at the overall effects of some of these decisions.
Okay, and there's no discussion on the tabling motion?
Does it require a second?
I believe it does. I don't want, tabling motion requires something?
Yes, Your worship, they usually, if the period of council's due, they should say so.
Okay, seconder for that motion. This does not obligate you to vote for the motion, although you can second. Counselor Crogg? On the floor, can we call a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion is, if motion fails, bringing us back to discussing individually, can we have a motion for the early bird approval for information technology and put that on the floor? Counselor Thompson, seconded. Counselor Corlick, open for discussion. Counselor Thompson?
Just a couple of comments that I think our security is far too important to postpone. I'm not just sure when our contractor is going to be retiring, but I think that we need to get on this so that he, when he leaves, we're not, we're not behind the eight ball, as it were. And the same with replacing the equipment. I mean, if it's failing and it's not meeting the needs, then it needs to be replaced and updated and I don't have a problem with supporting that either.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Moslin?
Yes, Yourship, I note that the item two, printers and IT equipment, is going to be spent throughout the year. That is not, it's not going to run out to future shop and buy $70,000 worth of equipment. This is, by giving the green light this time, it actually allows that department to plan those purchases and put them in a, to put them up in such a way as to have more impact for the dollar and perhaps, you know, gradually implement this new equipment throughout the course of the year, rather than have it, have to rush around in the space of two weeks to get it done.
But you were speaking in favor of the motion or is...
Speaking in favor of it.
Okay. Further comments? Okay, the motion is on the floor. This is budget early approval for information technology as defined in the report. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Zelinski? Thank you. Motion for... The second item is again, an early budget approval for sensitive capital projects. Can I ask for a presentation on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is for three items. First, the electrical three-phase metering. These have months and months of lead time when you order the actual product and doesn't give us a lot of time to the installation. So we'd ask for early budget approval on that. And then we have a feed closer, excuse me, on feeder five. So it's operating equipment that again, has a lengthy lead time to ordering it and then installation, which is, it's showing some fatigue and it has some cracked porshings on the top. And then the flood alert monitoring is something that we'd like to have in place prior to freshup. So again, the request to have early budget approval on those three items.
Get on with it. Okay, can we have that motion on the floor? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corlick? Further discussion? Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Knowing pretty good the first two items on the, on the list here, again, I don't see the need for the rush up until the first of March. And then I personally have questions about the third, third topic. And obviously, looking at our list today, other people do also. So, yeah, comments, I guess. Thank you.
Further comments? Ready for the motion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Duly noted, two in the opposition. Counselor Moslin and Counselor Zelinski. Motion passes. And the next item, E, is the proposed non-medical cannabis retail store license 426, development and engineering. What I'm, what I'm understanding here is that we did have some discussions this morning about this and that there was a desire for this to go out to the general public, which is what a plazidist won't hear and do at this point. This will put that circle of interest around that site at the Winnipeg Hotel. We still refer to it as the old Winnipeg Hotel. Sorry, I can't talk to you today, Amber, from the gallery. After a question here.
Just a question.
Okay. Comments on this? So can I get the motion on the floor? This is to proceed, Counselor Corlick, seconded by Counselor Thompson. This is not final approval on this, there are a number of complications with it, but I thought the desire this morning was to see public response to this. Counselor Thompson?
Well, as I said this morning, the request, I believe our manager of development and engineering said it was a 91-meter as opposed to the 100-meter from the Greg Walker School. That would be the reduction in the, in the area. But my concern is also Jarva Park being right next door and the library. So I think this needs to go up for public comment on this, or I feel comfortable making any decision in this regard.
Further comments? Hearing none, calling for the motion. This is going to result in a public notification in the zone surrounding that site. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed?
But anybody in the public that wants to comment on this can comment on it. Do they not?
I'm, yeah, it's public knowledge. I guess that we're going to get quite a bit of feedback on that. But we need notifications to that surrounding group. From planning?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our process with these is going to be two weeks of noticing in the paper and a public hearing. So they'll be...
Oh, and a public hearing?
Yeah, so they'll be carrying an opportunity for the public to get some views.
So there's the delivery, others going out to property owners and... You mean to the notifications surrounding property owners?
Yeah.
We could do that as well. This is up to council and up to the city to determine the notification process. If council would like us to do a 30-meter notification, which is to the properties that are closest, as well as two weeks of the public hearing. It's actually up to council to...
Is it necessary, Counselor Thompson?
No, I, I don't know.
Because there's not many residential in that area, it's mostly business.
Okay. So if the property owner, not the business itself, that would be notified. I'm thinking of the law. And if there was anybody in a, had a business there that wanted to make comment for or against.
So are you saying there should be individual notices?
No, I, I thought that, I thought it was a requirement. It's not a requirement. And the advertising is going to meet that need. And I'm sure that our media will help us with.
That's okay.
While this kind of happens, the process.
Yeah, it seems like we are. Okay. Can we get, moving on that, did we just raise our hands? Yes. Didn't we just go down? Counselor Zelinski was.
Did I confuse you?
All right, thank you very much, council. Moving on to number F. And again, with this, this is a approval of this to proceed on the location. It's a development permit that we're approving, and this is the final stage.
This is the form and character.
The form and characters are only issued in terms of the planning department, which they're satisfied with at this point. So a motion to support this project. Oh, no. Come on, Krog. Counselor. No? Counselor Zelinski, making a motion?
No, I'm making a different motion. I'd like to defer this, this development permit until eleven D, I guess it would be, of the agenda. Just for the fact of, I think it was forty-point-seven. I believe in the, in the wording in our bylaws. And unfortunately, without that amendment coming up in eleven B, I believe, I don't know if I could support it, the reason that was pointed out this morning. Clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll get you one.
No, no, I, I can give you one if you want. In, in eleven B, we have quite a few bylaw amendments.
Yeah.
Which, and I hope I have my number eight, forty-point-seven. We talked about the wording that's there currently, which is one or the other, where the amendment proposed in eleven B changed it to fit the development permit where we have both. So what I'm saying is that by law I have in front of me, without the amendments, says one or the other. If the amendment passes in eleven B, then it's both and would fit the development. And then I could pass, or I then, I could vote in favor of this development permit. And that's what I say. If that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense, but I don't understand it. I think we're going to need some clarification on this.
Yes, so the development permit is for the form and character guidelines. So that's what you're passing is the form and character guidelines of the development.
Right.
So if you wanted to do the zoning bylaw first, I mean, that, this.
Because it, it doesn't comply until we pass the zoning bylaw?
The development permit is fine because it's form and character. So it's, you're not approving the development per se, or you're approving the form and character of the development.
Are you willing to, to pass that?
I understand staff's comments.
Yes, you are.
I understand the comments and I guess as far as my vocals, I see what bylaw forty-point-seven reads today. Hopefully at the end of this meeting, it's going to read something different. Yeah, personal choice, I guess.
Okay, can we, you didn't get a second or for a motion you were attempting to make?
Yes, to defer till later in the meeting.
You didn't have a second or for that? So can I ask for a motion to proceed with the approval of the form and character being requested here in the development permit? Motion, Counselor Korlick? Seconded by Counselor Marlon. So do you understand that this is the form and character portion of their development permit, but the other question will be dealt with in the bylaws that we're amending tonight? Counselor Krog?
Yeah, fully understand that it's a form and character, but I don't like the form. I don't really like the character.
All right. The form and character has been recommended as, as accepted or accepted by the planning department. So you're questioning the planning department's acceptance of the form and character as presented?
Yeah, sucks.
Sucks, okay. Commercial sense. All right. Motion is on the floor. Further discussion? Counselor Marlon?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak in favor of the form and character of this housing project as a necessary part of our recovery process to have this project move forward. As council knows, I have some reservations about this project. Egress in and out of this project leaves me scratching my head. And the, and the increased density of four buildings on the one lot really seems to go at least against the spirit of our zoning bylaw, which would limit it to one building per lot. Nonetheless, I've caught myself in a bit of a dilemma where I feel that we need this housing, but BC Housing wants to move forward with it. Again, I sure wish they'd taken some time to come and talk to us about it before everything was, you know, set in motion. We did speak to the minister. She cited this project as a model for the province because it is modular, it's going to be a different type of construction, or basically a different type of constructed methodology. And I, I believe we could make it work in that neighborhood, Mayor, but it's going to take some continued work to improve Egress, to improve other qualities of life for this proposed subdivision. But as it sits, Mayor, right now with the two townhouse buildings, the five units each, and the larger apartment block of three stories, I can accept the form and character as something that's necessary in our community. Thank you for the motion.
Thank you. Further comment? Okay, this is to move this project forward. Fifty-two units of low-income family. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. I'm not sure what to do now. Can I have that? Okay. You're aware of the fact that voting this down likely from planning department's standpoint, this project will not happen this year? So I, I have the, the right to draw this back for another vote, which I can exercise at this point. And I certainly would like to caution you that this would be a major disaster at this point if we lose this project on the basis that they don't like the way it looks. This is form and character, they've, they've complied with every other zoning requirement. Counselor Thompson?
Do they not have the ability, because they are BC Housing, to say, "Thank you for your contribution, local inhabitants"?
Planning?
I suppose from a legislative perspective, they would. But council has to look, when you're looking at form and character, council does not have prescriptive guidelines for form and character. So when you're looking at form and character, you're drawing on the surrounding neighborhoods. So you're looking at Black Knight Market, you're looking at Tomcat Automotive, you're looking at the apartment buildings, you're looking at the townhouses across the street. Does it fit the neighborhood? Does it, does it match the existing buildings in the neighborhoods? That, that really is what council should be looking at. Unless council has prescriptive form and character guidelines already documented somewhere, which council doesn't, then you'd have to give justification for why you turn it down when you already have that type of housing in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Counselor Korlick? Just a second here.
Your worship, maybe a suggestion is that once the bylaw, as Counselor Zelinski spoke about, was debated and moved, that they should, just like we brought back again to another series.
I can certainly do that, I think, within prerogative of.
Yes, you may.
Okay, so we'll pass on this at this point and move on with the agenda and intend to come back to it after we deal with the zoning. Thank you. Okay. So we're leaving number, number F to, after we deal with B eleven. And moving forward, information items, the engineer of record, you have a proposal in front of you on that matter, do you need a presentation on it? Can I have a motion to appoint engineer of record? Counselor Krog? Counselor Zelinski? And commenting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion a little bit. Definitely I seconded it to get it on the table. I would like to amend the end of that motion to say, and to direct staff to prepare tender documents for the 2020, 2021 year for, for these services.
So you wanted to go to tender in next year?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's, I had mentioned this before, as far as even our due diligence and making sure we're getting good prices for engineering services. So it gives the staff a year to prepare needed documents to go up to the public to see that we are getting fair rates.
Okay, so this is a substantial change to the, to the motion and a second or to that amendment? Can we have a second or at the table? Counselor Marlon? Discussion on this, what we're saying is that this would direct staff to go to tender for next year, for 2021? For the 2021 year?
Just out of budget reasons. The, so the contract is due in, basically by March of 2020. To do the process costs roughly about forty to fifty thousand dollars possibly. To go out for tender, we would need to add this as a budget item somewhere, possibly for this year's budget then, to get the work done before Christmas and do the tender documents and all that.
So you're accepting this information that this could be in the neighborhood of forty to fifty thousand dollars in additional cost? Counselor Zelinski?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due diligence does cost money at times. We do have a lot of engineering ahead of us, and I just want to make sure that we're in good value for our money, that's all.
Thank you. And so you have a second or on the table with this motion?
Can I have the motion read back, please?
Yeah, I can't find it.
I can't find it.
Okay, the council received, this is the amended motion, and correct me if I don't have it exactly as you want, but the council receives memorandum regarding the engineer of record for 2019, 2020 for information purposes and to direct staff to prepare tender documents for 2020, 2021.
That's the motion. And seconded. This is a cost item, so keeping that in mind. Ready for this question? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Some people didn't vote, they voted for the motion, because if you didn't vote, you seem to be voting for the motion.
Quick, quick point here, we had the original motion from Counselor Krog and seconded by Counselor Zelinski. Counselor Zelinski then amended the motion. That would mean that's a new motion, the amendment, so we would need a second or to the amendment. Was there a second or to the amendment?
There was.
Counselor Marlon? So then you would vote on the amendment first? And if that doesn't, if that passes, then it would go to the motion of the.
All right, that's the way it is. All right, so this is on the amendment. This is Counselor Zelinski's addition to the, the motion on the floor. Ready for the question? All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? Defeated. Now we're back to the original motion?
Correct.
And that's already on the floor with first and seconded. Ready for that question? All those in favor? And opposed? That passes. All right, thank you. And moving down to bylaws, fees and charges. This is the letter of request for bike parking space on Market Avenue in front of Work and Play. You have that reported in front of you? Can I have that motion? Counselor Toilet, Counselor Krog, discussion?
Yes, seconded.
I, I think it's a great idea. We're trying to encourage people to get out and ride their bikes to work, or walk to work, in any place to park that they can have their bikes secure and get their.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I have to speak in favor of the motion as well. I think it's, it's very timely and it's going to reduce the carbon footprint.
Suggestion that we have a theme of a bicycle count, so I think that this is very much in line. Ready for that question? This is to approve the biking, what's the personal, all those in favor? Yeah, it will be shown costly. Now, down to the bylaws. A, fees and charges. This is final reading? And I have a motion for final reading. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Korlick? Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, when we were doing the other two readings of this bylaw, I was concerned that the fees that we're asking for this service might be prohibitive to keep in a very green community here. And that's the reason that I won't be supporting it in this form. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pretty quick question, final reading, fees and services, primarily the water rates. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Zelinski? Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, since we are then down to the bylaw amendments that, that we're dealing with with respect to the cannabis retail stores and parking spaces, other minor changes. We're doing this as a package. Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselor Thompson? And seconded by Counselor Korlick? Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And can we go back up and deal with second vote on the form and character of the fifty-two unit multi-family development project? So let the record show that the mayor has called us back for a second vote. I really, I don't know what's going on here. I thought that we had really good understanding in terms of this project moving forward. This could lose it for the whole community, either for a year or for good. That's the risk we're taking with this. Multi-million dollar investment in communities, low-income housing for families, and you're putting it on the line. Just so you know the importance of this vote. Further discussion? Counselor Zelinski? Now that we passed the motion amended.
Yeah, so I'm kind of gonna pickle here as far as how I'm gonna vote, I guess. I guess, and it's been mentioned before and the comments that's been made at this table since the past vote. I don't understand why, when it comes to a B.C. housing project, we get threatened with either do take this or do not. Just commenting.
Okay, and I've asked advice from our staff, not, they're not telling me B.C. housing is threatened. They're giving us their professional advice on what could happen here in this situation with the tight timelines that they have for the project. Counselor Thompson?
It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, they've already left the contract for this development, have they not?
That's my understanding as well. Counselor Crowe?
Yeah. Yeah, I voted against the form and character because as stated, we don't have a definitive set of what is form and character that go on the existing neighborhood. And it is kind of a mishmash, so technically, I guess, it fits in there. I just have concerns that the project isn't what they originally said. They were gonna put the townhouses behind. So that would be up against price and place, behind the main building. Not, not the front. So everybody has concerns, but I guess I can't really use it under the form and character.
Further comment, and then I'm gonna call the motion. Counselor Zelinski, you have to go.
No, it's just a process question, Mr. Mayor, whether or not we should even attempt to get it on the floor for the second time. Whether we should have had a secondary or not.
I think we probably should have.
I believe it would be wise to.
Yes. So calling it back, can I have a mover and a secondary for that motion?
To call it back?
To call it back, yes. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Crowe? Counselor Gladys? Right, so calling back the original motion. Can I ask, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Well, because I believe that this is a project we can manage. And there are... There's lots of detail here, yet to be resolved. You're getting access. Thank you very much, Counselor. Oh, I see. I thought that was the mayor running back.
Yes.
So a secondary was on the motion?
So that was the decision?
That's into the vote.
All right, thank you. Okay, the request to initiate procurement for East Downtown Flood Protection. I'm, I'm... Is this the latest? And you all have a copy of that? Has this been shared with the public at all? Okay. We did have some time to discuss this today. We assumed that maybe they could utilize the money that we had already allocated during Christmas to make sure that there was no slowdowns in this process. So this seems like another situation just like that with different items on the table in terms of what we want to continue to happen, not to stall. So can I have that motion? Recommendation, Counselor Corlech and Counselor Studley seconded. Discussion? Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to confirm some of the things we talked about, I was under the impression that we were gonna use these funds only to do the RFP and we're holding it there. It looks like this, from this motion, that it's not only spending money to create, to hire consultant for the RFP, but then go out for the RFP to find the dollars and do the engineering so that there's a cost that if we do get the funding, then we can receive from there. Just for clarification.
Right, I understood that we would be proceeding, and that was when we talked about the risks, that we were stepping out in front of our funding here to keep this moving forward. So there was a limited risk because we were told by our expert in the field that in fact, all of these reports wouldn't be still dated. They would become useful in moving forward anyway, so that it made a lot of sense for us to proceed again with the objective that we're not gonna be the place that slows down the progress. Further comment? Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe that we have to spend this money anyways, even if we are unsuccessful in terms of grant applications. Staff needs to be confident that we would be, but we're gonna have to spend it anyways. And the other thing I want to point out is probably there's not enough here in this allocation to actually pay for the actual works. That what we really, there's only sufficient money here probably to do the engineering and certainly not enough to do the works. So I think the motion then is sufficient. To my understanding, because of the limitation of the funding, that there's not enough there to do the works, just the engineering.
Thank you, I agree with the purpose and as I discussed and find it. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. I'd like to make a comment here that staff has set up a system where Counselor Moslin and Zelinski will have greater access to information since they are so enthusiastic about detail. We have made room for them to interconnect with the flood recovery team in a way that will allow them to exercise that enthusiasm and to also help council keep up with this very complex problem. So that's just comment. Thank you very much to staff for setting that up. Bringing us down to questions from the public. Now, Amber.
I just, I have just a question on how notice would go out, but you answered it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Further comments from the gallery?
I'm representing the cannabis store, the one on 426. I don't know if you guys have any questions or kind of, is this gonna be going to a public forum and more answer the question at that time?
Yeah, I think that we're gonna be entering a round of discussions. I'd be interested in hearing some of your ideas aside from the table here.
Okay, so right now or for discussion?
You know, away from the council table at this point.
Okay, perfect.
And, okay.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Through you to staff, because I was not expecting that a vote turned on your vote there. So I'm still interested in the answer on H.F. Through you to staff. If council had denied the development permit, does that open council up to any legal action as Evan planned? Or I see if it were...
Because the contract was led?
Well, because it was led and because we don't have prescribed form and character guidelines, is there any liability for council that way, should they have denied it?
Can we have an answer to that or a guess? Would that have put us in hot water?
A developer could definitely come in and challenge it because they would come in and say to council, "Okay, where's your form and character guidelines that you're using to make this decision?" So it could, I mean, I hope that they wouldn't go that far that they're coming to have a discussion, but...
It could have opened it up to that kind of litigation. Amber.
Amber, talk ultimately. Does the city not have form and character guidelines?
We do, but we haven't defined what it is, so it's very subjective. So it's administered to planning and it's basically their opinion. And if they have a problem, I think they're understanding order to bring that back and let council decide if there's an issue that's contentious in terms of form and character.
It's actually not our opinion because we don't go on opinion in this department. It's whether or not it complies with our OCP and our zoning bylaw and the bylaws. So we compare it to what we have existing. And if it meets it, then fine. If it doesn't, then yeah, we bring it back. And if council had prescriptive form and character guidelines, then if it deviated from that, then we would certainly have to run it to council to make a decision on it.
So it's collectively subjective? Right, it's subjective collectively. Move back, Chris.
Yes, as previous counsel, I thought we did have form and character. So if there isn't prescribed form and character, can I suggest that council develop one so that there is...
What they're saying is we haven't defined it to the point where it's objective yet and that it has to fit certain criteria.
Right, that might be something that meets work.
Whether we can get more specific on it or not, or whether we want to? Amber?
That's actually one of the next themes in the OCP. So the next one was active transportation and then the one after that was to define form and character guidelines. So it's to work with council on some workshopping to come up with some more prescriptive guidelines for these areas. We're just not there yet.
Also, on Second Street project, I know it's not on the agenda, but it was in Counselor Moslin's report and he could discuss it tonight. And I just wanted to read some correspondence, just some excerpts from some dialogue between some of the business owners, upper business owners downtown and the Downtown Business Association Board. "As a business owner that owns their building, I'm having second thoughts about this decision. In hindsight, I would have been financially better off to at least then to have owned. With a lease, at least I would have had the option to move on. There are things among us, there are few among us at this time that have expressed an interest to close, sell, or liquidate their businesses in hopes of minimizing our losses. If we are all to sit down and do a financial projection of what our total sales would be with the housing project as opposed to without, we would come up with the same conclusion. We would be financially better off without them. On the other hand, the city needs the investment and tax dollars, but this is my opinion. Is that the expense of a vibrant downtown community? In my opinion, B.C. housing and certain members of our city council do not recognize how fragile our current businesses are. I think we may see an exodus of some current businesses and I'm not totally convinced we will see any significant new businesses willing to invest in a broken downtown core. If push came to shove, I would support Fisk with their decision to negotiate with B.C. housing as this would be most beneficial to Grand Forks, but I would also be formulating my exit strategy for when and where to move on. I for one deny my conflicts and I'm finding that we are fighting a losing battle to maintain the lifestyles that we are accustomed to. It is a fight to maintain, not to improve. That is financially not a fight that I want to be involved in." That's one business owner. Another one. "I feel like as a business owner and someone who was put in a position to buy my building in the next few months, I feel like I still want to give resistance on this project not happening at all. I understand that potentially means that they pull out all projects they have in town, but I do firmly believe that housing can still come into town that doesn't have to be built by B.C. housing. As a business owner, if this project goes through, I will have to think very hard about my future. And that also means I would be put in a position to not invest in a property downtown that might very well become a once profitable business to something that puts me in red after a project like this."
Thank you, Chris.
So I think, you know, serious consideration on B.C. housing's part, which they said that they had taken in consideration. With regards to the impact on the downtown businesses, they're not listening and they just want to push this through. When previous counsel met with Judy Darcy, Minister of Mental Health and Addictions, a year and a half ago, and Selina Robinson, Minister of Housing, to discuss the situation that was happening here in Grand Forks and how our community wasn't in a position to, we didn't have the resources to deal with it and we need their help. They said that they were very closely together, hand in hand, housing, mental health, and addictions, problem solving. So far, they haven't shown that they've cooperated together. B.C. housing has come in and thrown housing, they have a mandate, it's 2,500, that they needed to push through in a year. And in September, Selina Robinson announced to the UCDM that she was so proud that they had been able to accomplish that within 10 months instead of the 12 months. And all they've done is they've gone community to community, putting those stereotype, push that package into communities without any consultation, just to meet their mandate. When Selina, when Armin was here in September, I took her down to Broad Acres to do a tour and suggested that B.C. housing work with Ministry of Health and Mental Health and Addictions and set that up as a first phase rehabilitation center and work closely with IHA and bring them all in as a team so that any affordable housing would be second stage housing. You would not be putting addicted in with recovering addicts or with seniors or people with mental health issues. And they said at that time they weren't interested in programs. They're only interested in putting roofs over people's houses. So they're not working together as a team. And I think it's time that Mental Health and Addictions stood up and put some skin in the game and as well as IHA, working together so that whatever affordable housing they put in this community is only second stage housing for those with addictions and they should be opening up something like Broad Acres where people can learn life skills, they can grow vegetables, they can rehabilitate in a relaxed, quiet environment, learn some job skills, and then rehabilitate back into the community in affordable housing. But to put them all under one roof, I think is a huge mistake and you need those two ministries working together.
Thank you, Chris. Further comments, Nigel?
Just to say, Your Worship, my name is Nigel James and good evening, councilors. And I totally agree with the last statement.
Thank you. Further comments from the gallery?
I agree as well.
All right. Let's pre-agree. All right, nothing further than a motion to adjourn.